Curville City Council is in session and we will begin with invocation and pledge. Father, help us as a council and the city staff to work in ways that really build trust in our community. And that that leads to a sense of security and out of that so much can happen. Lord, help us to warrant that trust. How we conduct ourselves, how we respond to those who come before us, and particularly being careful in every decision we make. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Let me go over once again some procedures that we're following in this unusual time, still dealing with COVID-19. And we hope as soon as we can to move back to full meeting, citizens here, and everything else. But despite the COVID-19 pandemic, an emergency situation we are all dealing with, we are thankful that we have a way for the public to remain engaged and participate in open public council meetings in various ways. Citizen or public participation has been available by calling in, emailing, or using the City Hall drop box before 5:45 PM. All of these instructions are provided online and in the agenda. Any questions that citizens and visitors might have may not be responded to until after the public comments have concluded and if a member of council raises the question. Finally, we have attempted to omit any nonessential items from the agenda like announcements, public forum, items for future agendas. Instead, citizens and the public are always welcome to contact the city via our website, city app, email, and phone to make, comment, or ask questions on any subject. We ask for your patience regarding any difficulties that might arise as we move with this new format on a temporary basis. We come now to the consent agenda. There's only one item on the agenda at this time. Ms. McElhanan, would you read that in, please?
Minutes for the city council meeting held May 26, 2020, and no citizens have signed up to speak.
All right.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the previous meeting of the consent agenda.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion second, all in favor, let it be known by the raised hand, unanimous. Okay, that's the end of the consent agenda. And we come now to consideration possible actions. Ms. McElhanan, would you read in 2A?
The purchase of sport field floodlights for the Curville Sports Complex through Musco Sports Lighting LLC via the Texas Buy Board in an amount not to exceed $268,700, and no citizens have signed up to speak.
All right. Council, do you have comments or questions? And first, there you are, okay. If you will share with us a background.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd just like to share a couple slides with you on a summary of this agenda item. The City of Curville received a very generous grant from the Calhoun Foundation for capital improvements at the Curville Sports Complex. The grant was for a total of $500,000 and it was split between two fiscal years. FY '20 was $300,000 restricted specifically for softball field lighting at Pod 3, and FY '21 was $200,000 for general capital improvement needs. And I'd like to take the opportunity at this time to thank the Calhoun Foundation for their continued support and investment in our community. Okay. And the Curville Sports Complex, as many of you may know, has three pods on the baseball and softball side. Pod 1 and 2 both have lights, but Pod 3 at the bottom near our maintenance building does not have lights. That was something that was cut out of the original project budget, just strictly due to funding. The lights, if approved, will be installed at all three fields at Pod 3. And the addition of lights will allow for increased opportunities for evening tournaments and usage. Right now, about 25% of the usage at the complex is at Pod 3, and that's only because it does not have lights. The sports field lights that we chose are the same exact ones that we have at the complex currently. They are Musco Sports Field Lights. It's a turnkey project for $268,700. It is 100% grant funded through this grant through the Calhoun Foundation. And this quote was procured through the Texas Buy Board Purchasing Cooperative, so it is compliant with our purchasing policy. Just like our existing lights, they are hooded and dark sky friendly. As you can see in the picture there from Pod 2, that's what they're going to look like. They're excellent quality sports field lights. They have a 10-year 100% maintenance warranty associated with them, and they have an energy efficiency of about 40% to 80% reduction versus normal typical metal halide equipment. It'll take about six weeks once we give the approval for the order for them to deliver and install the lights. And this purchase is also consistent with Curville 2050 for investing in our existing parks and before acquiring new parkland or creating new purchases. So at this time, staff recommends authorization to purchase the sports field lights as presented, and I'll be happy to take any questions you may have.
Okay, Council, do you have questions?
I was just curious, the difference between LED lights and HID lights?
Yes, so the LED lights are, they're higher quality lights, they're more expensive. And basically with those lights, they have a driver associated with them. The metal halide lights have the ballast, so they're, it's essentially the difference in quality. LED lights are much more high-quality sports field lighting, but the system that we have now is basically ranked number two, right underneath it. It's something that's very high-quality in the sports industry, so we're comfortable with it. And one thing that we've noticed too with LED lights is the drivers tend to go out much more frequently than normal metal lights or halide lights. So that's why we're recommending to go with these in addition to the consistency of the look of the complex and the way the lights will shine, they'll be the same.
Good, okay, thank you.
All right, other questions from the council?
Actually, just, I'm just curious, when, is the electrical already run for those? Was that run when we built the fields?
Yes.
So we don't, all we're having to do is set the poles and hook them up?
Exactly.
Good job.
I was just curious, are we going to make some seasonal leagues or tournaments because of the six weeks? Because it looks like that's a pretty good turnaround.
Yes, yeah, and D-Bat already has several games and tournaments already lined up with the governor's new orders, so they had some games over this past weekend, and they already have some more scheduled out through the rest of the summer too. So we're excited about that.
Okay, any other discussion on that matter?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize the purchase of the sports field lights for the Curville Sports Complex as presented, and at the same time, I want to thank the Calhouns for a very, very generous grant for us.
Yes, thank you. Thank them.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
All right. I want to join in your thanks, Ms. Eichner, to the Calhoun Foundation. What they have done with the city, for the city, is very significant. There are just a lot of things that have happened that could not have happened had it not been for the generosity of that foundation.
I wanted to say that my son will be out there this weekend, so it's very nice to have a Curville team playing in a tournament and me getting to stay home and watching our kids on our own field. So I'm excited, that'll be our first tournament at D-Bat, so we're very excited.
That's exciting.
Good.
Take pictures.
All right, okay. We have a motion second, all in favor, if you'd let it be known by the raised hand. It passes unanimously. All right. Now we move to briefing on storm events. Ms. McElhanan, if you'll read that in.
Briefing on storm events that occurred during the week of May 24, 2020, and no citizen speakers have signed up.
I'm sorry?
No citizen speakers have signed up.
Okay, all right. Mr. McDaniel?
Yeah, so we wanted to bring back a summary of what we experienced, not just on city property, but across the city in terms of all the cleanup, which actually is still going on, particularly in our parks and streets. And as you know, there's a lot of brush that's still out, and they're picking it all up. I've been very impressed with what Republic has done, so I'm going to ask EA to go ahead and present this along with Kim. So EA?
Thank you, Mr. McDaniel. Yes, as you all probably felt last week, we had several significant events, just got pounded several days in a row, right when the crews, as they were working through the nights and in shifts on cleanup efforts and traffic efforts and numerous calls, right as we were getting one wrapped up, it seems like we'd have another one either the day after that or the next day. So I just wanted to kind of briefly go through, and probably the biggest thing, just give kudos to our field crews and our public safety personnel for the effort they did. But Sunday evening going into Monday morning, 24th and 25th, the area had a significant thunderstorm with high wind activity, followed up by Monday evening, and then going into Tuesday morning, we had a thunderstorm with multiple local lightning strikes, high winds with suspected tornadic activity, and then in fact, a hailstorm with ground level accumulation. Had a little bit of a respite on Tuesday, although we had significant power outages across the community during that time period, and then a significant afternoon rain event, which fortunately did not have a massive level of flooding, but we did see localized flooding across the community, both in private properties as well as some of our creek systems coming up. Did not see an extensive amount of river flooding, which was fortunate, although the river did rise. So just quickly going through some of the pictures, we saw some just massive trees go down, not only on private property and damage numerous houses and vehicles across the community, but also falling into the public rights of way. And so we did have streets crews and parks crews out there, you know, tending to these matters as best we can, not only, again, on our city facilities, but also these rights of way. As you can see, this was a very large tree that had been uprooted.
That's a crystal.
A small red circle there, you can see, unfortunately, that was a country that had fallen over from a neighbor's house into a car that was parked in the right of way. You can see the license plate there, just on that bottom right-hand corner. That was a bad day. Hailstorm, just an amazing amount of accumulation, not really very large hail, kind of pea-to-meat marble size for the most part across the community, but you know, just anywhere from two inches to eight inches in some areas. And then followed up by some significant rain that came down in a very short period of time on Wednesday, and some degree of river rising. We did see, you know, some mud and some other things that did accumulate on the river trail and in some other areas. Not a significant rise, but there was some rise there and debris buildup in certain areas. So I'd like to ask for Kim Meismer to join me to talk a little bit about the storm damage that we incurred at city facilities.
Thank you. Okay, so we had a lot of damage at our city facilities that we're going to go through. I think we have 40 slides of pictures. This is not everything either, but it's pretty significant. This was out at the library beside the playground. This is the stairs down to Tranquility Island, down to the bridge.
Wow.
Some more, several trees fell on this stairway. This is the Car Regional History Center. There was some water damage in the floor, and then that leaked into the ceiling as This is, the next several slides are going to be at the water plant. This is ASR 1 Building. It actually picked that building up and moved it.
Can you go back to this one? I want to highlight, there's that red circle, you can see a piece of tin that's lodged about 50 feet in the air up into a tree that's twisted and it kind of come down on that large oak tree, so very significant level of winds. In fact, we measured with our weather station at the water plant, we measured 93 mile an hour winds.
Excuse me, say that again.
We measured 93 mile an hour winds at the water plant.
In addition, if you look at that little silver building that's underneath the red circle, that building was beside the building, right next to that other little building on the lower left. That building that's over there by that fence was over on the other side by the building. These are some more pictures of the ASR 1 Building, and then some of the damage that occurred to the components when the building was actually lifted up. This is some more damage at the water plant, the Chlorine 2 Building. It's a busted window and some roof damage and some tin damage. This is the clarifier. This is the Clearwell Building that you can see in the back. You can see the roof was lifted off of that.
Wow.
This is the filter building. It's up high, so I think it got the most wind damage, but it actually picked that up and moved that about a foot and just damaged the whole building basically, as you can see in that one on the left. This is the MCC Building, and it took the roof off of that. It's just gone. This is the H Street Well. There's some damage to the roof and then some damage to the fence line. The Water Reclamation Building, they took the roof off of that, parts of the roof. Some more damage over there at the Water Reclamation Plant. And this is water damage inside the building, inside one of the buildings. This is the Chemical Building. You can see it tore the roof up on that one. Anytime you want to, if you want to add in, go ahead, EA. This is City Hall. We had two places where we got water in the building, one in the finance, in Amy Dozier's office, and that's on the right-hand side. And then the other damage is right over on this side, where the emergency door that goes out on the right side back here. That, the water damage over here, it actually dried up really quickly. We had some fans on it. Amy's office, we had fans on it, but it didn't dry up as well, and it got actually underneath her wall, so they had to cut out part of her wall.
So did most of that come in under the door?
This did come in under the door. That, I'm not sure. It may have, it may have come in by the flower beds underneath the wall. This is fire administration. There were, they had water damage over there. You can see in the picture on the right-hand side, that I believe they turned that shelf upside down so you could see the water damage to the shelf. This is out at Guadalupe Park. It was a very big tree that fell on the fence over there that's by the basketball courts, and it also toppled down two light structures, light poles. There's some more damage that you can see at Guadalupe Park. And some more, that's in the fencing there that's going down the walkway that goes over to the waterfall. This is the Sports Complex. It completely took down the fence on this field, but it didn't take the poles down, the structure down, it just took the fencing down, and they were able to pick that back up. This is some more damage at the Curville Sports Complex. It just picked up those soccer goals and just threw them all around. This is Shriner Golf Course. This is the netting, and that netting is torn. That's a pretty high-dollar item. This is some water damage inside the Tennis Center Pro Shop, and then on the left-hand side at the top, that's damage to one of the nets.
Is that new construction?
Yes.
Is it, I'm just curious, where, where did it come from? Roof leak?
Where did the water come from? I'm not sure, I've not been out there.
It was an overtopped drainage swell area from the adjoining property, kind of coming up from the, what would be, I guess, the west side of that.
Well, I guess on the right-hand picture, I'm looking at that, that's roof damage, ceiling damage though, isn't it? So that's a brand-new roof that was leaking in the storm?
I'm not sure on the roof damage part. That may be in one of the bathrooms from an existing.
Okay.
This is the Curville Shriner Park Water Well, and you can see the electrical pole fell into the fencing. This is the Curville Shriner Park teepee, just completely demolished. This is some damage out at Louise Hayes Park and the trees. There's more damage in the trees and some fencing. You want to talk about this?
Sure. Yeah, so again, as we reiterated earlier, just ongoing cleanup effort. Certainly wanted to highlight good use of the new grapple truck. Got that one just in time. They've been hard at work here these last two weeks to try to get all those elements cleaned up as best we can, and it's going to be a continuing effort as we've also been reopening parks, you know, across the community as well. So just a tremendous effort from our parks crews, from our streets crews, from multiple Public Works departments on their facilities and the way they've been damaged, and making sure those lift stations went down, they were working through the night, using VAC con trucks to make sure that those were working, making sure that, you know, generators were going on and water was still getting out to residents. And certainly, as we mentioned earlier, just a tremendous effort from our public safety personnel, both in the number of calls that we got from all of our fire folks tending to structure fires and trees that had been hit by lightning and other medical items, and certainly our police officers. We had a number of extensive amount of traffic signals that went out throughout the community and that were out for an extended period of time, and so just dealing with the continued movement of traffic throughout the community. So an all hands-on-deck effort across a holiday weekend, no doubt, and a whole week. So just a big kudos to those folks. If you happen to answer questions you may have.
I just, you know, I've never, I've been more proud of our city to watch everybody, from parks to streets to Public Works to K-Pub and all the other communities that brought people in here to help police and fire. Just never have been more proud of the way the city responded to that.
You know, I have to say the same thing. I was just very, very pleased, especially in our neighborhood, they were out there taking care of poles that had been hit by lightning and the things that were emergencies first and then came back to get all the cleanup. So they did a great job.
There wasn't a lot to do on the river trail. I didn't realize, the first day I walked in, I got all the way out and had to walk through a bunch of mud, and then literally within five days, I saw a bunch of debris that had been moved from the trail, and I've gone back now and it's all gone. Y'all are working hard.
They are working very hard.
Yes.
Kim, you might want to comment on the insurance claim that we've put in, are deductible?
Okay. Well, we had, we had 47 properties damaged and 11 vehicles with hail damage. We also have, we were able to, typically a claim like this, you have a 1% for each item, so each building that is damaged, you would have, you would have to pay 1% of the value of that building would be your deductible. But we, TML offered a buyback, which we took advantage of, and so our deductible for this claim is going to be $2,500 inclusive, everything. So we're very happy for that. You know, sometimes decisions pay off, and this was a big decision that paid off big time. For our vehicles, we will have a $500 deductible for each vehicle, but for the property items, it's $2,500.
That's amazing.
So we're pleased with that.
Fantastic, fantastic.
Good job.
And Kim, none, all of the water, everything kept working, even though with the damage, there wasn't anything that stopped.
No, I think they moved over to, the water moved to wells.
Yeah, we did. For water service, we moved over to well service. Fortunately, we didn't have any extensive outages on our wastewater lift stations, just a little bit that first initial night while we had some power outages. We were able to switch over to generators and do some manual pumping, and then K-Pub, you know, helped us get power back on as possible on Monday on Memorial Day. So we were able to keep everybody, keep the water coming in and the water going out.
At one time on our, in our street, we had, on the utility side, K-Pub, Johnson City, Segin, and Lano Cruise. And it was amazing to see all that. I had one question that I think I know the answer to, but I said I would ask it. That is, well, from more than one person. Folks saying, is there some way the wood can be dumped in a certain area and people can salvage some of that? And I assume with folks out there with chainsaws and climbing around logs, the safety issue would just be too great.
So we, a lot of those materials are being stored right now at the transfer station, and so they will actually be chipping a lot of that material, and then we'll be utilizing it as daily cover on some of the landfill materials. And so it will be reused, it's not like that's all just going to the landfill.
That's great.
Good.
Good question.
All right. Any more questions?
I just have a comment too, and just right along lines with everybody else. I had someone ask me who lived out of town, it was probably the second day after, you know, I heard it looks like Ground Zero, and I said, it almost looks like. I wouldn't say nothing, but the, from that night and how quickly our city recovered, so to speak, because of the city and K-Pub and the first responders, I mean, I don't even have words to express how impressed and thankful I am for all of the efforts. I mean, I can't even imagine what went into making everything continue to work so seamlessly with very little exception.
Okay, do we have any public comment, Ms. McElhanan?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. Then we will move on to the next agenda item, 3B, Ms. McElhanan.
Briefing on the city's ongoing preparedness and response to COVID-19 coronavirus. And Mayor, we do have one citizen speaker signed up.
Okay.
But before Danny gets started, I have a few updates, just some logistical things. We anticipate that beginning in July, we hope to go back to our regular format for these council meetings, where we have the public that's in here and probably still doing some social distancing and providing some measures that will keep everybody safe and healthy. But that would be with the first meeting in July. That's the plan now unless something changes. Also, you have probably heard that playgrounds are now open. We did ask the mayor to get a question into the Attorney General to get a ruling on that because the guidance wasn't real clear, and particularly after the governor's Phase 3 reopening announcement, we want to make sure that we were, you know, doing the right things and opening as much as we could. So we got that opinion back. Mike was very helpful in getting that done, and the playgrounds are now open as well. We also are working with the folks that do all the planning and staging for the fourth on the river. We are anticipating that they'll come up with a plan. In fact, EA and both chiefs are reviewing that plan now about how we can make that work, probably for a more limited group, not, you know, 5,000 people of course, but something smaller and respecting the existing guidelines that are still out there. But they hope to have something happen on that night or that day, and so it's very encouraging that this could very well happen. Farmer's Market will reopen on June 19th. That'll be the first date. It'll be modified, they'll have one entrance, one exit, they'll have vendors spread out, they'll require distancing and one customer at a booth at a time, no beer, no music, no loitering, just come and get your stuff and go. And that will change, of course, over time as, you know, things continue to reopen. And then finally, we are looking at reinstituting utility disconnects, but not until July 15th. We want to get another cycle, build out, and then resume that. And of course, as always, if a customer contacts us and worked with us and sets up a payment plan, there is no disconnection, but it would be those that just don't, you know, contact us at all after they receive all their notices, so that would be reinstituted, but not until the middle of July. So those are some of our plans as we continue to make progress on reopening and do more and more in that regard. So we'll continue to keep you updated. Unless there's any questions for me, I want to turn it over to Chief Smith.
Mark, on the playgrounds, what, I haven't gone to read, I apologize, but what, if somebody asks if they're taking their kids, what do they have to do, not do?
I'll ask Ashley to come on up since we have the advantage of having her here tonight.
So we're asking people to continue to social distance, stay within six feet between other people, try not to go in groups larger than 10. And we are asking folks that if they go to a park feature and they see that they cannot maintain distance, to kindly not use the feature, maybe come back or go to a different one. And then we also are increasing our sanitization and decontamination of all the equipment as well.
Okay, thank you. Well, masks, they're outside, so masks would not be required?
We don't, we're not requiring masks, and we're not requiring social distancing more heavily. We're heavily encouraging it and masks obviously are up to the individual to decide if they would like to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, members of council, before I get into COVID-19, just a few comments on the storm. I think EA and Kim gave the council a really good overview in terms of the impact of the storm. But there's a few key individuals that I think we owe recognition to. And I think we've got plans to recognize them at a later date, but to just give you a little idea of some of those key personnel. Our public safety dispatchers processed over 1,000 calls within 124 hour period during the storms. And lieutenants Jureski and Kryus with the police department and our battalion chief, Mark Logan, the fire department, they did an outstanding job just constantly adjusting resources to make sure that no call was missed. And this would have not been possible without Joel Miners in the street department and Justin Lookway in the parks department actually clearing the roadways of debris for us. And then, you know, I can't pass this opportunity up to recognize Ingram Police Officer, Emilio Ledesma. He performed CPR on a citizen that was struck by lightning and it's because of his quick thinking that we anticipate this person will actually recover fully from this lightning strike. So I think it's important to just point that out before we get into COVID-19.
Thanks, Chief.
Yes, thank you.
Got a brief report for you tonight and I'll start with kind of a Kerrville-Kerr County update, the tests and case count. The reporting period, May 31st to June 7th, there was 100 tests conducted in Kerr County. From those tests, zero confirmed cases. We're now at a total confirmed COVID-19 case count in Kerr County of 21. Of those 21, 18 have recovered. And I just got a report from the Department of State Health Services prior to coming here. It looks like we're down to one active now. So out of 28, only one active COVID-19 case in Kerr County. And then y'all are aware, we do have one death in Kerr County now. Texas Military Department testing, they were in town June 1st. They conducted 51 tests at the youth event center. Those test results are pending. We understand that there's so much testing happening in the state of Texas right now. There's a backlog in getting those results. We do have them scheduled to be at the Dahl Center on the 11th, which is Thursday. They'll be there from nine to five. So I think that announcement went out today. We're looking forward to taking that testing opportunity to the Dahl area. Our nursing home testing, I reported to you the last meeting that we completed it on May 26th. The total count was we tested 820 individuals that were staffed and residents. All test results are in and it feels really good to be able to say that there were no positives out of 820 individuals.
That's phenomenal.
It is.
Must be doing something right.
COVID-19 hotline still remains opening. Calls are down on it. We're averaging about three calls a day and you can see what the frequently asked questions are. Is Kerrville testing? Yes, we are. We're going to be doing it every opportunity we get a chance to. How many cases in Kerr County? You've got those numbers and then questions are still coming. Should I wear a mask and not wear a mask? And then I'll just close with those reminders that we always try to point out to the community. COVID-19 is still a threat to society. So we encourage everybody to practice good hygiene, continue the recommended social distancing, avoid contact with people who are sick and those over 65, we strongly encourage to take the extra precautions. And with that, I'll take any questions you might have for me on COVID-19.
Counselor?
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Now, we have one individual with a comment or question?
Yes, sir. We do have one citizen speaker signed up to speak.
All right.
George Barudy.
Okay, I'm here. George Barudy, 1616 Glen Road. The first is just a question. Is the disaster declaration that was revised or adopted on March 20th, is that the one that's still in effect and is it unmodified or has it been modified in the interim?
Does the council have a question?
Is that a, that is...
Yeah, that's a question. Is that the disaster declaration still unmodified in effect? Is that the one?
I'm going to refer to the city attorney.
It's still in effect. It hasn't been modified since the last...
Okay. All right, I just wondered. Okay, so secondly, is the real reason I was calling in. So on May 5th, council passed a resolution requesting that the governor arbitrarily reassess all new non-property, all non-new property within the state of Texas to whatever the accepted valuations were in 2019. It was stated by the resolution that this was the moral and ethical thing to do in order to provide some financial stability and certainty during this difficult time. Following passage of the resolution, the Daily Times and various members of the community have mistakenly portrayed this request as a form of tax relief by representing the request as freezing property taxes, when in reality, the resolution was not asking to freeze property taxes, just assessment values. As you all are certainly aware, the total property tax revenue collected by the city is determined solely by this council when it adopts its budget. The city backs into the tax rate by dividing total tax revenue needed by the total taxable value of the properties of the city. Purpose of individual property assessments and the reason it is legislatively mandated that assessments are carried out fair and equitably across all the properties is to fairly allocate the tax burden across all property owners. I would agree with a quote that was attributed to Ms. Eichner in the Daily Times and the resolution itself that was previously passed, when they say it would be morally wrong to increase taxes during this financially unstable time. I would urge and request that this council consider supporting the moral decision in the only way it can by adopting a resolution committing to utilizing the no new revenue tax rate, formerly known as the effective tax rate, for the city's upcoming fiscal year budget. This is the only way to ensure the citizens of Kerrville can be given any meaningful financial stability that your prior resolution was requesting. So I would just urge you to consider doing that as you're going through your budget talks upcoming. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Barudy. All right. We come now to board appointments and I'm going to request a motion to go into executive session under section 551.074.
I will so move.
Second. We have a motion, second. All in favor of going into executive session related to the board appointments, let it be known by the raised hand, and it is unanimous. For those who are watching, we will go into executive session and then come out and share a report if there is any. It is 6:55 and the council is out of executive session. And in regard to an appointment to EIC, I'm moving that Councilman Cochran serve on EIC and...
And we reappoint.
Reappoint Don Murdaugh.
Reappoint Sam Ligon. And, no, I'm...
Maggie McGee.
That's a different one. Reappointment of...
Don Burnett.
Don Burnett.
Don Burnett.
And Maggie McGee.
And Maggie McGee. Got it. Okay.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Okay, we've got a motion, second. All in favor, please let it be known by the raised hand.
I guess I can vote, I don't know.
Yes, you can vote on yourself. Okay.
You should.
Yeah. On 4B, the tax increment reinvestment zone board, we are deferring that. It'll come back in first reading, second reading, and we are asking the staff to move that to seven members. Right? Yes. Now, is a, since it says deferred, we don't need to take a vote?
Right, no action needed.
All right. Then, 4C, Ms. McLennan?
ZBA.
Appointments to the zoning board of adjustment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend that we reappoint Sam Ligon and that we move Ernest Garza up to the other vacancy and that we add Mike Asmuse to, as an alternate, as well as keep Kate Morlow as another alternate, which will fill the board.
I'll second that.
We have a second? Okay. All in favor of that motion, let it be known by the raised hand. All right. At 6:57, we're adjourned as counsel.